Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, June 25, 2018 meeting of the Falls Church City Council to order. And I would like to invite our scouts in the back to come lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if they would. So why don't we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and have our scouts come forward and they can lead the Pledge of Allegiance for us.
Do it by the microphones? Is it able to be expressed?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse is out this evening on travel, I believe. Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Zee?
Here.
And Mayor Charter?
Here.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. So do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Substances, yes, have it. I don't believe we have any proclamations or special presentations this evening. Is that right?
No, sir.
Okay. Any oaths of office to administer?
No.
Okay. We're cooking. How about a summary of written comments? I think there's just one this week, isn't there?
We just had one from Mr. Kevin Shea of 519 Timber Lane. He proposed using real estate tax abatements to encourage builders to preserve trees when developing single-family homes.
All right. So I have not received any speaker slips, but if anyone in the public or in our audience would like to speak, you're welcome to do so either now or when the case you're interested in is heard. But if you would like to speak, please fill out a speaker slip at the back of the room and hand it to the clerk and she'll hand them to me. If you could keep your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Seeing that there are no public comments at this time, we'll go on to council requests. Are there any council requests? Mr. Duncan?
Just one. The order of boards and commission meetings over the next six weeks and those dates connected to the Founder's Row hearings is something that we've talked about trying to get out in the public. So I just want to make sure that staff is going to be able to do that. There's a town hall or a public meeting, I guess, Wednesday night here that's put on by the applicant. Mr. Shields?
Either that has been put on the city website or it is about to be. And Ms. Aubrey, I think maybe you can give us the latest on that.
The webpage was populated last week with the planning commission and city council upcoming dates. We are waiting to hear back from some of the boards and commissions on their exact dates because of 4th of July holiday and trying not to book same rooms at other commissions. So we're hoping to get that up this week.
Okay. That'd be good. It'd be nice if we could get it done in time for the public meeting on the Wednesday night.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other council requests? If not, yes, Ms. Connolly?
Mr. Shields, you forwarded a memo from Dr. Noonan regarding the PPA process and the council's role in that. And I certainly can't answer any questions about it, but I'm just, I want to make sure everybody received it and find out if there's a, what's the best way to answer questions if there are questions that we have.
Well, if there are questions, if you could forward them to me and the city attorney. The city attorney, I know, has had a couple of conversations with council members on some individual questions. And the city attorney has been speaking with the school administration and their team about that contract. What the schedule calls for is for the school board to consider the approval of a design-build contract with the top-ranked respondent at their meeting in July, and I forget the exact date of that.
Seventeen.
That'd be July 17th. And then the city council, under the PPA, would be asked to approve that contract on July 23rd. And so it is something we're paying close attention to. And let me refer to Ms. McCosker if she would have anything to add to that.
The only thing that I would add is that if council members are interested in commenting on the comprehensive agreement, if we can do that before those dates as soon as possible, that agreement is available on the website, on the city website where the schools, all their contract documents have been, and the draft comprehensive agreement was there. So if you wish to have input, please let us know as soon as possible. Look at the document there. If you would like me to assist you with looking at the document on any particular provisions, let me know. But the sooner we get them, our input, the more likely we are able to have that input really considered in terms of the finalizing of the document.
Is there a deadline for sooner? Like by the end of this week or?
We haven't set a specific one, but I know we'll still be, I know we'll be discussing one or two issues next week. So I think you could, you could, probably early next week we could do it. Maybe we can set a deadline of the 4th of July, essentially.
Okay. And then as far as questions that other people have asked you, is it things that generally might help the rest of us understand or is?
Well, they were things that were just mentioned in some council meetings, but why don't I get something out to council telling them what the issues were that I've looked at? And some of those things I am discussing with the schools team at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
On that note, Ms. McCosker, could you just send around the link for the comprehensive agreement? I'm on the website myself and I can't find it easily.
I'll do that.
Thank you. Ms. Hardy, I think it's in that mess, the email from Dr. Noonan. I think there's a link in it and it's included in the RFDP, but that's the only spot where it is, right?
That may be. I'll get it out again to everybody so you'll have it, in case you can't find it.
All right. Let's move on to the report of the city manager. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Charter, members of council. Just a few things to report on. One, I would note that we will, we're gearing up for festivities on Independence Day, on the 4th of July, next Wednesday. And we will plan to have live music and fireworks up at George Mason High School. And I would also note that the readings of our founding documents will be at the Falls Church this year since City Hall is under renovation. Vipas is leading that, but that is where the, where it will be this year. So we're looking forward to that. One thing I'll just also, I'm not trying to make news tonight, but one thing that we do need to work through is that next year we'll have construction happening up on the campus site, potentially, and which may make it so we can't do fireworks up at the George Mason High School. And in addition, where the new high school is planned, we, there's rules in terms of how close a building can be to where fireworks can be shut off. And so, or, so it may be that we need to reconsider where a location will be in future years. That is a developing story. I certainly don't have all the information on that, but it was raised as a concern by our staff and something we'll need to work through. But for sure, this Wednesday, we will have fireworks up at George Mason High School as soon as it gets dark. Generally, we start setting them off just after nine o'clock. Then the other things I want to note is just some pre look ahead to your work session on July 16th and a couple of issues that we're working on that we'll be bringing to council on the 16th. One is the construction management at risk contract for the library renovation and expansion. That's under negotiation right now. We'd like to discuss that with you on the 16th and ask for council approval on the 23rd if everything goes per schedule. In addition, we would, the Housing Policy Task Force is wrapping up its work and we plan to bring its recommendations as well as an initial review of the housing chapter to the comprehensive plan for discussion on July 16th as well. So we'll have the library, construction, a full briefing on the status of that project as well as consideration of contract approval plus housing policy for discussion on the 16th. It may be that we'll, per your question of just a moment ago, if there's a desire for council to just have a briefing on the PPA agreement for the schools on the 16th as well, we'll try to add that to the agenda so that you're not looking at it for the first time for the meeting on the 23rd. That's all I have to report tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to business on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have TO 18-01, Ordinance to amend Chapter 48, Article 5, Division 10, B2, Central Business District of the Code of the City of Falls Church, to amend Section 48-486, Principal Uses permitted by Right in order to allow additional uses and to edit language regarding persons with disabilities, and to amend Section 48-488, Special Exceptions for Development Projects on Sites Designated as Special Revitalization District for Education and Economic Development and Designated for Mixed Use on the Future Land Use Map.
All right. Welcome, Ms. Bell.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of things I want to bring to your attention about tonight's report before I get into the details. As Ms. Heath mentioned, there is some additional language in this draft that we did not discuss at the work session. It is intended to update language referring to persons with disabilities, and it's part of an overall project that the city is undertaking to update its code to correct these references to current language. It is an amendment to the B2 along with the other items we'll be discussing, but there's no changes to the permissions or requirements or anything. Strictly an update. In terms of the B2 amendments that we most recently discussed at the May 17th work session, the proposed text amendment is enabled, is intended to facilitate your approval of a significant commercial project, mixed-use commercial project on the commercial site adjacent to the high school. Amendments that we have before you this evening for first reading provide you with significant flexibility from the existing B2 language and would enable you to prove a variety of building heights, locations, et cetera, mix of uses, all that you would need to get the right kind of project for this location in support of the overall effort for economic development at this end of the city. The two-step process that we talked about before is unchanged, and I'll just review that briefly with you now. This achievement, the approval would be achieved through a two-step process, including a special exception entitlement, which would be heard by yourselves following review by commissions and boards and, of course, by the staff. It would create a general plan for the commercial site that would result in legal entitlements that would run with the land. So both the council, the community, the developers would all have an understanding of exactly what is being approved at that time, and that would be remaining in place regardless of changes over time unless amended by the developer. The timing of the application for such a plan would be shortly after the approval of your exclusive rights agreement this fall and would run or align with the approval of the comprehensive agreement approximately seven months later. The special exception entitlement must be approved before the developer could go any further, and in that approval, they would be only entitled to the by right uses that you approve with that special exception entitlement. So there is no risk to the city of a developer abandoning an approval and deciding that they want to put another B2 approvable use otherwise permitted by right. This approval would govern future approvals in the step-two process, which is known as the special exception site plan process. That process would take place at the appropriate time for the development. As you know, the developer will not have access to the land for actual construction until such time as the high school is largely completed or entirely completed. They could file for approval of a more detailed plan, which is akin to your, your current site plan approval process, at the appropriate time in the development for all of the parcels that it would be proposed to be created or some. They would be acting on that prior approval, the special exception entitlement, which, as I mentioned, covers building massing, the mix of uses, the site layout, infrastructure, public facilities, transportation. That is the framework approval. And then they would be providing in the second stage the detail that would actually enable them to gain the approval that they could then take to permits and design drawings for actual construction. So the two-step process actually simplifies things from the earliest proposal that we had brought to you. The second stage, like the first, would include the opportunity for commission and board review, but the second stage, as with the first, would be approved by the city council. In terms of the questions that you raised at the last session when we discussed this, the timing, as I mentioned, is critical. There's approximately a seven-month period of time between the initial exclusive rights agreement and the comprehensive agreement, and this special exception entitlement would happen in that time period. It would be negotiated concurrently, reviewed by staff and commissions, such that they would align at the time of those approvals. The by right risk was raised in a couple of different ways, but I think we feel comfortable that both the city's ownership and the terms that would be applied in the comprehensive agreement and the conditions of the special exception entitlement would prevent a developer from doing any by right development other than that which you have approved. The same would be true for any interim uses. Since the work session, we did see comment from the down-selected firms who were party to this project, and we heard a couple of different questions around uses. And mainly, it was how broad the uses could be described or how broadly would they need to be described. And some of this discussion was based on other projects that these developers have been involved in, whether the particular entertainment or service or retail uses might be appropriate or allowable under the B2 language. And in discussion with staff and the zoning administrator, it's clear that the way that the process is structured, it would be possible to work through, for example, an entertainment space or a performance space or whatever was proposed through the various levels of review and be approved, if in fact that is something that the council chose to do. There was also another question regarding phasing and some concern about being locked into a phasing schedule because phasing is a part of the process. Developer would be required to indicate both uses and timing of construction in the proposal. And it's clear that the way that the market could change could affect a developer's desire to build particular use at a particular point in time. So that question was elevated. We believe, again, that within the scope of the approvals and also the agreements with the city, that those matters can be addressed in a manner that's satisfactory, and there is the option for an amendment should the market change dramatically. With that, I won't go into further detail unless you have questions, but just to say that we recommend that you move forward with first reading this evening.
All right. Thank you very much for your fine work. Are there any questions for Ms. Bell? Yes, Mr. Zee?
Yeah, thank you for this fine work. I think it's come a long ways, and thank you also for taking the time to explain to us all the terms of art, which I'm sure I won't remember tomorrow, but at least someone here does. Let me just ask you, when the land was conveyed to us of its own R1A, and do you recall what that means roughly in terms of FAR?
R1A is a single-family residential zone, and it has fairly restricted uses beyond that. But that requirement is part of your zoning ordinance, so that's the way a piece of property comes into the city until it is rezoned by the council.
So would it be, are our residential requirements, if you, if you break it down, come out to about .25 FAR? So would that be similar?
I think that's about right. About right. Four houses per acre, so it's a quarter-acre lot kind of district. So yes, it's very, very low density.
Okay. And I notice here at line 238, we're calling for an FAR of 2.3 to 4.0 or higher, which is, as I recall, the recommendation of the planning commission and others on council now. Can you describe to us, to me, what an FAR of .96 would translate into roughly in terms of the kind of development that might occur?
Well, .96 actually is .96 times the site area. So it's, it's still fairly low density, and it could be all one building or to a particular height, or it could be multiple small buildings scattered across the site.
But to the reasonable minimum on the street, what would that translate into? Say if half were townhouses, the other half would be maybe two, three-story buildings?
Probably not much more than that. It would be one- and two-story strip commercial heights, maybe some townhouses. It would be very low density, lots of green space around it.
Sure. Could you take a look at that and send council a follow-up on what that might translate to?
Sure.
Just to give us a couple scenarios, we have an understanding of what .96 FAR would amount to. Thanks so much.
Other questions, comments? So if I just wanted to, I probably just missed things in here. Is there a section that deals with amendments?
I think the only actual discussion, and we can add some specific language to this effect, the only reference is really to amendments requested by a developer, and I think we reference the current process that would be used, but it's, it's just touched on.
So I think it'd be good if we had something very clear. It wouldn't surprise me if a couple of years from now, someone wants to tweak or change what they've got due to market conditions or whatever, and I think we ought to just be crystal clear right off the get-go what the process is so that there's, you know, there's just no confusion about it. And as I understand it also, this particular section of zoning ordinance would only apply to the school site. Is that right?
At the present time, this is the only site that has the designation that it's applicable for and meets the five acres.
And you said, what was the last bit?
It has a five-acre minimum as well.
Yeah, but so, I mean, I guess let's say there wasn't a five-acre minimum. It could only be used on this site anyway because this is the only site that has that designation.
Correct.
And so I was a little curious about the five-acre portion of it. For example, what I was thinking possibly is, let's say these parcels get subdivided, and I don't know if this will be, what will happen. We don't exactly know just yet. But if you had, for example, four two-and-a-half-acre parcels that sort of stood on their own two legs, you know, this is the hotel parcel, this is the office parcel, whether someone would be able to come back and amend it if they got broken up at some point? I'm getting kind of technical on you, but I read, look through that lens.
No, I understand your question. The five-acre minimum is really a threshold to even apply for the special exception entitlement. So that umbrella that's going to cover the entire 10 acres has to have the five acres. So it obviously does. It's, the five-acre minimum does not apply to the subdivided parcels that might be created for the purposes of development on this site.
But if you later on wanted to amend one of those parcels, to come back in for, you know, some kind of tweaking in one of those parcels, it's kind of, it's a little subtle. We probably don't need to get in the weeds right now, but it's just something.
I don't think it would affect them in, in that process once they get that SCE approved.
Okay.
It just makes them eligible to even apply.
Gotcha. And in looking at section, I guess it's maybe 2E1 that talks about basically phasing, it says, "Such timing shall ensure that the commercial uses will be constructed before construction of a proportional amount of gross floor area of residential uses." What's the intention there? Is it intended to be that it's one for one, that in other words, you can't build any more than the actual GFA of a commercial use, of residential use or?
I think that the main thrust of that language is to make sure that the developer doesn't just build the marketable uses and leave the other things that make this a great place out because the market isn't there. So the idea is that they have to be prepared to go forward with a mix of uses and some of them concurrently in order to be able to get their permits so that the project actually is a coordinated mixed-use development.
But so, I agree with what you're saying, and I think I wholeheartedly agree with the concept. I'm a little concerned about the language when it talks about a proportionate amount, whether that's going to be read to mean literally the exact same amount or greater of commercial has to be done. So for example.
We can take another look at that.
I think the concept is accurate. The language seems a bit too, too constrictive. So I might just take a glance at that and see if there's anything we might want to do to ensure the concept, but make it so that it's not so rigid that it doesn't really work out. What I don't want to do is be amending this thing like as soon as we come out of the box with it. One other thing I think would probably be helpful to do as part of this solicitation, you know, the PPA. I think a lot of folks are going to be looking at this saying, "What is it?" And even folks who practice in other places who have a lot of experience may still say, "What exactly is this?" I think it'd be great if we had some kind of brief summary that developers and their attorneys can take a look at to just say in a narrative form, you know, "This is very similar to PDSP in Arlington." And the concept is you get a conceptual approval for your density amounts, and then later on you come in and you show the specifics of, you know, how it all works together, or whatever it might be. I think that would be good to have as part of just information for developers who want to understand this. I think kind of full knowledge and full understanding helps everybody.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Ms. Bell. I agree with the earlier comments that this has been very comprehensive and appreciate the iterations on this. Two things, I just wanted to make sure, I think you spoke about this, but I wanted to confirm my understanding. One was for both the SCE and the SESP, I assume it's like other ordinance where we'll have two readings and then we'll be able, after first reading, farm them out to boards and commissions for discussion and feedback.
That's correct.
Because I imagine that for things at the site plan level, we're probably not used to looking at that, and that's probably more planning commission role, because I think they probably would play a large role when we get to the SESP stage.
Right.
Okay. So we're not, like, removing them from the process. They clearly have a big role.
Not at all.
Okay. My second question was around phasing. So if I understood it correctly, given that all the approvals we've seen have a phasing plan, the SCE would be that conceptual approval for the entire 10 acres, and then you would have various numbers of SESPs for the different phases. Is that correct?
The SESPs could govern a large part of the site, or they could be a small parcel. There's no correlation necessarily, but the key is knowing what is likely to come online in what order and where those buildings are going to be located or those improvements.
Okay. And I think this is probably what the mayor mentioned earlier, but I assume that the environment and the economy will change between when the SCE and the comprehensive agreement are negotiated to when the SESPs are done? Or what is the timeframe that's going to be, that we envision between those two?
It could be a number of years between the original SCE approval and certainly the last of the SESPs. The intent is for the developers to apply for the SESPs when the, it's at the appropriate time for them, so they would be watching market cycles presumably and would file when they think they've got the right piece of the project ready to go. But having committed already to a phasing plan, they will have to be working closely with the staff and so forth to make sure that what they're proposing to do correlates properly.
Do we talk about kind of how they could go back and amend things, given that the environment could change between the phases or?
I think we, this is one of the pieces we need to refine for the next reading.
Yeah, just trying to put on their hat. I assume that they'd probably be uncomfortable committing to something that knowing, not knowing how things might change, and they might.
I'm sure that that is, it's a sticking point, I'm sure, for some.
Yeah, and then for us also, we have the flip side where we're trying to protect ourselves and make sure we approved what, we're going to get what we approved, though. Okay. Thank you very much. That was it.
Okay. Are there any other? Yes, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Line 464 through 470, talking about abutting an R district. Is there an R district that's next to this?
This is existing language in the code.
Okay.
So there actually, I don't believe, is an R district.
Okay.
Because it's Fairfax County adjacent to the property.
Right.
But this would be a factor if they were not taking advantage of what we're proposing this evening.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else? Mr. Snyder?
So, thank you. So if we implement this ordinance and we get a, a project in and they tell us, "Well, the commercial that we thought we were going to get, we, market doesn't want to do that anymore," do we have the ability to say, "We're not going to approve other parts of it"?
At what stage are you speaking of? Are you talking about when they go to the SESP stage or at the initial stage?
Both.
Both. I think you have a great deal to back you up if you wish to not approve it. I'm not an attorney, but I think the goals that you proved in January speak to a coordinated mixed-use development. And you, I believe you have the option to work a project over to achieve what you intended to achieve here.
So if we approve this special exception and we get to the site planning process and they say, "Well, we can't do that hotel," just hypothetically, or "We can't do some other component that I think we felt was essential," what happens at that point? They have an approved SCE. We say, "Okay, we've got these 10 acres and this is going to go here and that's going to go there, and we've got these pictures and it all looks great." And then they come in and they say, "Well, you know, the market's changed or we've changed and we don't want to do what we said we did." What's our ability at that point to hold them to the SCE?
The voluntary concessions that would have been approved with the package should include the ability for them to seek an amendment. That doesn't guarantee that you would approve such an amendment, however. such an amendment, however. And I think you would have the option to say, "We prefer to wait it out and to see." Just to give you an Arlington example, Arlington County waited 16 years for the hotel market to pick back up in the Courthouse area, and there was a hole at the end of Courthouse Plaza with a fence around it. Hideous as it was, they waited 16 years till the market came back. And that hotel was integral to the mechanics of that project, both financially and from an urban design perspective. You would have that same choice.
Do we have the choice to say, "We're not going to allow you to go ahead with a residential until we get our commercial"?
To some degree, it depends on how the overall approval is structured. The discussion just a minute ago about proportional, which, of which use and another use, it really depends on how much flexibility is built in and what the triggers are for certain kinds of construction or phasing to happen. So a lot really depends on how those agreements are struck. Clearly, the developer will want flexibility to meet market cycles, and you all will want to protect, you know, your goals for this place. Obviously, there's not always going to be a meeting in the middle, but you will have the ability to review alternate proposals, certainly, or amendments to what is approved at each stage of this.
So let me, let me go back to the hypothetical. We approve the S E, and it has certain key commercial elements. And then they come in with a site plan, and they say, "Well, we're not going to do X, but we'll, you know, we're not going to do the commercial, but we want to build a residential." You're saying what about this ordinance?
It isn't merely the ordinance that would give them permission to build it. It's really the way the phasing is approved in the specific approval that you grant. So if the approval stipulates that A must come before B, and there's no possibility of an A plus B plus C, or whatever, combination, that is what they've agreed to as a part of the project, and then they would have to seek an amendment. If flexibility is built in, such that some sort of market study or other kind of external objective thing comes in and suggests that the timing is wrong for a particular use, but they can do this at this time instead, you would again have an option to approve it or not, or possibly to alter the phasing of which uses come in in what order.
So let me ask you another not-so-hypothetical question. So what if the legislature comes along and says, "Well, we're going to extend the S E Es to 10 years as opposed to whatever we granted." Is there anything here that we're building into this ordinance that could block that?
I don't believe so, no.
I would ask city attorney if there's a way we can prevent the recurrence of that.
We can look at that. When you have the initial, the S E E approval, which is the heights and massing and locations and uses, in the first instance, there's no right to build anything until they come in with a more detailed plan. And so it might be that we'd be protected. It depends what the state legislature's going to do, but it might be that we're protected because right then they don't have anything that they can build yet anyway. It isn't until they come in with the next phase of the approval with a detailed special exception site plan that they can build it. And we can see what we can do. I think they're, given what was done last time, to just extend approvals, it would be if someone had a special exception site plan approved already, I think it might be difficult for us to avoid that, but we'll take a look at that certainly.
Can we look at how we can draft to minimize our risk there? Because that really, it's a one-sided extension. In other words, we approved an S E assuming a certain time period, assuming a certain build, and the legislature comes along and says, "No, we're just going to extend the approval."
Right.
Which, in the case of a high school property, could be a major financial hit to us because we're relying on that generating revenue.
Right, right. We will take a look at that.
To pay for the school.
Right.
Right. So could you take a look at that?
Yes.
And see what we can do to draft around that. I see there's a provision on group homes that's been changed. Is that dictated by changes in state law?
That is a change, just to update the language, reflects state code, yes.
It reflects state code?
Yes, there's no, no change to the requirements or permissions of it.
This is something that is an issue throughout the ordinance to update that language. We took the opportunity, because it's, this section is before you now, to do it for this section. We expect to come forward in maybe August with comprehensive zoning code amendments throughout the zoning chapters to update that language, which is consistent with today's state code.
And is the planning commission, because we're going to be approving the site plan, which is normally a planning commission obligation, is the planning commission been consulted on this, and do they have an opinion?
The planning director did speak with the commission about this, and I think there was a general understanding of the recommend, the intent of the change for this particular section of the ordinance. Obviously, we'll be briefing them when this goes before them. There's also a work session item going to them, I believe, at July 2nd on this.
So what you're saying is, "We don't have a firm opinion yet from the planning commission on this."
I did not speak with them directly, but my understanding was that there was a general acceptance of this approach.
General, not just general understanding, but general acceptance?
I think so. That's my recollection from the discussion with Paul. Okay. Carly confirms that as well.
Okay. And then finally, if we make substantive changes to this on second reading, it's traditional that you have to go back to a first reading. And I realize that we're on a fairly tight timetable, but there's, this is a pretty significant action, and we are going to seek opinions from a number of sources. So what's the, what's the sort of criteria that would be used? Would it be any different from any other ordinance? That is, if we make substantive changes, it has to go back to first reading. I don't want to get caught in a situation where we want to make changes, but in order to do that would mess up the whole timetable, so it would be pressure not to make the changes, even though we may want to do that. So...
It is the same as any other ordinance. If it changes as to its substance, it has to have a new first reading. I think that, you know, given some of the comments tonight, we might try to make some little revisions that council's requested to make sure that we reflect those things, and they go into the advertising, so they would not be changes in substance, and it's just going to have to depend to some degree on what comes up. It's hard for me to, it's hard to predict exactly what is a change as to its substance. We sort of have to look at them and see the degree. But if it's, if it's reflecting something that was already intended and wasn't said clearly, that's not a change as to the substance. But if we really have some mechanism that's in here that we're planning to do differently, that may end up being a change to the substance. And I'm trying to think, I don't know maybe why it has a better feeling of how tight this is in terms of the schedule of everything. I think we may have a little flexibility with this one.
Ideally, this would be adopted and in place by October at the latest. The schedule is to have it adopted on August 13th. And so there is a little bit of, if we need extra time, I think it's, we've got time to make sure we get it right.
I think those are my questions right now. Thank you very much. Thanks for the answers.
One last question. Would you anticipate voluntary concessions to be provided in connection with the S, whatever it is, the conceptual plan?
Yes.
Okay. So would those be detailed like we typically would do for a project? Are these kind of fairly generic, like there might be, you know, five or 10, not 50 or 20, or whatever it is?
I think you could have quite a few. The key would be that they would align with what's going into the comprehensive agreement, so the negotiations would be occurring concurrently on them. I think they have to cover what they have to cover. So if it takes 20 to get it right, I think so, it's worth it.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting because you have an agreement with the developer, a private agreement, which you can put everything in really in some ways. You have a public approval, which you can put everything in in some ways as well. And so do you duplicate everything in both agreements, or do you put some in one and some in the other? I think it's something to be thinking a little bit about how we want to structure things. But anyway, unless there's anything else, thank you again for your fine work, and we look forward to wrapping this up coming up here. All right. What's the next, sure?
Do we have to vote on this?
If you want to pass it on first reading and schedule a public hearing?
Oh, gotcha, okay. Yeah, yeah, all right.
So I move to grant first reading to T O 1801. Refer to the school board and planning commission for comments. Schedule second reading and public hearing for August 13th, 2018, and advertise the same according to law.
We have a second?
Second.
All right. Before we move on, is there anyone who wishes to speak publicly about this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public.
Would it be possible for the city clerk to provide the minutes of the Q and A we've just had along with this as it goes out? Because I think there were some questions asked about it.
From tonight?
That would be helpful for interpretation.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are we ready for our vote?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. And let's move on to our next item.
We have T O 18-07, Ordinance to amend Chapter 8, Article 6 of the Code of the City of Falls Church, Private Schools, Special Schools, and Home Child Care Facilities.
All right. Good evening, Ms. Vincent.
Good evening. I ask that the city council grant first reading to the ordinance to amend the childcare. And the reason for this is to bring it in line with the state code. The purpose is to increase the safety of the children who are in home daycare in the city. Currently, there are three citywide home daycares. And in order to be classified as a home daycare, the facility must serve children for four days a week for any period of time, and the provider must receive compensation. The biggest changes are increases in the number of barrier offenses, and those are offenses that would prevent somebody from having a home daycare. And the barrier offenses would apply to any adult residing in the home, not simply the childcare provider. So any adult in the home would undergo nationwide background check and be fingerprinted. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? All right. Is any one of the public, any member of the public wished to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to public discussion. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant first reading to T O 18-07, schedule a public hearing and second reading for July 23rd, 2018, and advertise the same according to law.
We have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
All right, nice work. Thank you. All right, the next item is?
T R 18-34, Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Third Amendment to the capital funding agreement, C F A, among Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority, W A M A D A, and the contributing jurisdictions, and to opt out of W A M A D A's issuance of debt consistent with the C F A.
Mr. Shields, are you going to handle this?
Well, to tell the truth, Ms. Messner and I didn't discuss before the meeting as to who would be, who would handle it. Cindy, do you want to handle it? Are you prepared to handle it?
Okay, good evening, counsel. As we talked about at last work session, we have before you the W A M A D A capital fund. It's a one-year extension. We have been working with D R P T and N V T C and W A M A D A to implement this, consistent with the transit funding that was approved, and ensuring that the funding that's not being allocated this year is put into reserves for future years for our capital obligation, and also to make sure that all the rest of the funding is sorted out as we move through. Staff is recommending approval of this. We have included in your staff report the dates for which the other localities of Northern Virginia are acting. Fairfax County has approved the C F A last Tuesday. We did make some modifications in the resolution from what you would have seen last year. We have noted the transit funding that the state has dedicated towards this, and in your council packet you have the written D R P T letter to W A M A D A committing the 121.3 million, as well as that this, that is meeting the city's obligation, that proportional share for us. So we did put those references into this resolution, and now therefore be resolved to formally document those actions because the C F A still refers to the full $384 million capital obligation, not net of the state's share. So we wanted to make sure that was very clear in council's action as we transmitted it to W A M A D A. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and staff does recommend approving the one year extension. It is only for one year. Will allow us to see how everything settles out with the implementation of this and revenues.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Snyder, are you actively involved with W A M A D A? Do you have anything to add?
No, I think I want to commend Cindy and the staff. I think this is a very good approach. We're saying we agree to it, but the money is going to come from another source, which is a good approach, I think.
All right. Are there any questions? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Councilmember Snyder for his three decades worth of work on this issue, and we're seeing benefits, and that's, that's great. Can you state for the record that this has, this resulted in no change to the budget that the council passed a month and a half ago?
Yes, as it stands right now, this would not have an impact on the local budget as adopted on April 22nd or 23rd?
Promise?
We are talking about the General Assembly and W A M A D A.
Can I look at your fingers? Are you crossing your fingers?
Yeah. I will note for the record that this is based on projected revenue generated from the state for gas taxes, so forth. So we are monitoring it closely, but this action tonight does not impact your adopted budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there any member of the public wished to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Again, our thanks to you, Mr. Snyder, for your active involvement, and you, Mr. Shields, and Ms. Messner for your active involvement, and Carol McCrossery.
And Finance. It's a team effort, for sure.
No, nothing for Celeste. But anyway, thank you all. I know it's been a lot of work, and it's been a long process to get where we are, so we appreciate it.
Mayor, I move to adopt T R 18-34.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six to zero.
All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. And the mayor asks if any councilmember wished to remove any items from the consent agenda. Hearing none, city manager will read the consent agenda items. So before we do that, I would like to say, I know there's a lot of folks who have had interest, particularly on the library board of trustees, and I know probably not everyone who had interest in getting on that board was able to do so, but there are some other spots, and there will be further spots going forward for a lot of good folks. So hopefully, we can find spots for, for everyone who's interested in helping out here in the city. Mr. Shields?
Mayor, members of council, there are three items on the consent calendar. The first is appointments. There's an appointment of Christie Swinney to the library board of trustees, and the reappointment of Stephanie Oppenheimer, also to the library board of trustees. There are the two additional items is authorization for a contract to Baker and Taylor for the purchase of library books in the amount of 182,000. In addition, a contract also for the library for $160,000 for the purchase of e-books. Those are the three items on consent.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any member of the public wished to speak to this item? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
All right. Before we move on, we've got three kids in the back who've been sitting patiently. I don't know if you're, are you guys here for a Cub Scout or a Boy Scout badge? I don't know if you're, are you guys here for a Cub Scout or a Boy Scout badge? Boy Scout, all right. What, too, if you guys, you want some pins, some city council pins? Why don't you come on forward, we'll get a picture with you all for leading the, the pledge of allegiance. That's right, that's right. So come on forward, you'll get our thanks for sticking around.
So Nick, you're supposed to be in the same angle so that your picture, your picture in the paper is the one that counts the most.
You can tell it's summer, because they're smiling. You tell it's summer, because the boys are smiling.
Yeah, they look very relaxed.
Yep, exactly.
All right, is there any other business, business not on the agenda, folks that would like to discuss?
Mr. Mayor, I'll keep this brief. So the North Virginia Transportation Commission held its retreat on Friday, and we had two staff members there, and the gist of it is that with the change in legislation, that N V T C will play a greater role in oversight of Metro. So N V T C is creating three key committees, a Metro Committee, a Legislative Committee, and a Program Committee. And the one bottom line, which I thought represented the city best, was that we have a right as a Metro Funding Jurisdiction, if we want, to serve on each of those committees. That was not entirely a given at the beginning, so I think we achieved that. But it means that the appointment in the future of both the N V T C and the alternate will likely play a greater role in the direct management of Metro. Now, N V T C will still appoint one Metro Board Member, and the Commonwealth of Virginia will be able to appoint one Metro Board Member to represent Virginia, but I think it's safe to say that to protect the interests of the jurisdictions, this is going to be an even greater responsibility than it's been in the past. Also, N V T C's funds on a yearly basis have gone up from about $240 million to $400 million a year. So it's, it's, it's sort of gaining in importance, so I just wanted to report that out, and I think we've got regional commitment to make sure that on each one of the key committees, we can, can have somebody there. And then I wanted to remind everybody that on Thursday morning at 10:00, there'll be a dedication of the beginning of the widening of I-66, right? And recall that along with the widening went the replacement of a lot of sound walls that are literally kind of replacing themselves, or, or certainly doing a demolition themselves. And then that bridge, the bike, the bike bridge over Lee Highway is also ultimately going to be part of that project. So I think it's really a great idea for anybody to be there that possibly can be Thursday morning, 10:00, and near the, what's the name of the motel again? Hotel?
The Econo Lodge, right. Yeah, so the, Viat has offered a shuttle from Taco Elementary School, but I think probably for the Falls Church people who want to go, the easiest thing to do is just walk straight there. It's going to be in the green space in front of the Crescent Apartment Building, so if you walk by the Econo Lodge, you'll be right there.
And hopefully, relevant staff as well will be there, so.
So, could I ask, so there are people who do plan to attend that?
Yes, the mayor has been asked to speak.
Okay, thanks.
And I think everybody's invited, yeah.
And it's posted.
And it's posted.
All right, are there other comments, other business not on the agenda?
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, so we left early today, that means we have to make it up later, so we'll have a late meeting, we've already had a bunch of late meetings. All right, anyway, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. We are adjourned in less than an hour.
Is this a record?
It is a record, good job. I know.